2020 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin the meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation, but without the pledge, because we are seated in our respective locations. And Councilman Alexander is going to offer our invocation for the evening if you would.
Let it be a heart pray. Father God, we come once again to say thank you for the city of Gallatin and for this beautiful day that has created. We pray oh God for all of our citizens, all the nursing home, all the docs, the nurses, and all our caretakers. We pray oh God that thou would be in this meeting about everything we say and do. Be pleasing in your sight and change as then we do pray into your heart's head.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Alexander. My sound for Ms. Kitchell to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Present.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Mr. Fann?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Love?
Here.
Mr. Overton?
Present.
There we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, before we proceed, we must all vote, or you all must vote, on holding this meeting electronically. So I'm gonna read this, and then you may make a motion if you so desire. Says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive order number sixteen and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the May fifth, 2020 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. Instructions for public participation in the meeting are available on the city's website at gallatintn.gov.
But Jimmy Overton?
Second by Councilman Alexander.
We have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. And is there any discussion? If not, I will ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll and take the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fann?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Then we are okay to proceed then. Next item is the approval of minutes. There are none provided, so we will proceed to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time that we have at each meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, for the public to comment on any item that's on the evening's agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where people may comment on items that are not on the agenda. And our communications director, Jeff Hinchell, will handle the public comment, because some people may be joining us by Zoom, and some people may be joining us by telephone. I'd also remind you that there is a public hearing this evening, so if the public hearing is the item in which you're in rested, you may wish to comment under that item, which is the first one on our agenda. With that said, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. Mr. Hinchell?
All right, we'll start at the top of the list. Pascal, your mic is open.
Good evening. Which, just before starting, which item is at the public comments?
That's the Odom Spence Road rezoning.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me talk about the budget, if you're all okay with that. First, I want to thank you, Mayor, for being proactive on what's going on. When, in situation we never seen before, and you can all see in the news and around us, a lot of people lose their job or go pickets. And I think the budget should reflect that. City employees get a lot of perks. They get the 2.5% automatic salary raise, 5% from the city towards 401K plus a 4% match. They get short-term disability, long-term disability, life insurance. Like I said, these are a lot of perks. And this is great that the city takes good care of their employee, and I can appreciate this firsthand, because I'm working for a company who's doing the same. But until business is back as usual, the employees should share the same burden than the rest of the majority of our population. Mayor, on your video address five days ago, you mentioned taxes, and your words were, "The council will potentially be changing the tax rate." I don't know if that was a statement for the future or if that was just a presentation, but I understand that maybe it's understandable because of the incredible amount of loss of revenues from the city with the COVID-19, and that's not your fault. Or, but before eating taxpayers with a tax increase, because honestly, people can't afford it right now, maybe the city employees should pitch in. I know it's not, people don't like to hear things like that, but the city should do a freeze on salaries, on 401K matching, and on iron. Just numbers, that's a lot of money savings on the budget. This city has around $20 million salary. If you get the 2.5% automatic raise, that's half a million dollars. If you freeze a 4% match, that's another million dollar savings. So right there, you save 1.5 million dollars. Iron freeze, you can move people around from department to department. On your budget, you cut the road repairs from almost $3.5 billion. So I suppose a lot of road not going to be worked on, and there probably people who can move from here to somewhere else. Just a thought, you know, I know you're doing the best you can on a situation like that, but I really think, you know, the employees should pitch in, because at the end of the day, we taxpayer money are giving them money to survive. And I'm gonna stop there, and Michelle with me will want to say something, so you can restart the club. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the phone number ending in 283. Would you like to speak on an agenda-related item? Phone number ending in 283. Okay. Andy Leith? Your mic is open.
I'm just here for the item one and two, in case y'all need me. I'm representing that.
Very good. Mr. Marchesi? Your mic is open. Okay. And that's all the names we have.
All right, well, thank you very much. That concludes Mayor's comments. If for some reason you did not get to comment at the first of the meeting, there will again be a time at the end of the meeting where you can comment on non-agenda-related items. We will move now to Mayor's comments. I just have a few things to share. I do want to give you an update on coronavirus in Sumner County, because I've been doing that. As you know, we are now multiple phases into reopening per the governor's orders. Last week, we opened restaurants and retail. We've now opened gyms and exercise facilities, and we will be opening, I think the thing that people are most excited about tomorrow, salons and other personal service businesses. There are still some businesses like non-emergency dental procedures that we're still waiting on guidance on and updates on, but I think a lot of things are back open, although not operating as they used to. But I have a huge appreciation for the extraordinary measures that many of our businesses are taking to keep their employees and to keep their patrons safe. I mean, they're really, if you've been out and about, you've seen some of the things that these businesses are doing that are really an effort on their part. I particularly appreciate the people wiping down the grocery carts. But I just want our businesses to know that they are appreciated and their efforts are noticed. Also remind the public that, you know, we all have a responsibility to. I think certainly now requires more patience from us and understanding, and to also be accommodating when businesses are making specific demands upon us. Everybody's operating as they can at this point, and not everyone is open yet. But we hope that we will continue to keep the spread of COVID-19 down in our community, and that more and more businesses can open, and that we can eventually return to at least a more normal routine. Today in Sumner County, we have reported 665 cases to date. There have been 38 deaths from the virus reported in our county. The numbers are going up. I think they're going up slowly, so that's good. One thing that was particularly, hate to use the word exciting, but some good news, I think, was on this past Sunday, when they had the mass testing at Gallatin High School. The Sumner County Health Department tested 591 people. Of those, 15 people, 15 out of 591 tested positive, but only two of those were Sumner County residents. So I thought that was a really good number for Sumner County, especially compared to the mass testing that was done a few weeks ago, where we had many more positive cases that came out of Sumner County. Finally, I'm gonna give a huge thank you to our Public Works Department, our Gallatin Department of Electricity, Lineman Crews, our Police Department, our Fire Department, and I'm sure utilities worked some as well following the storms on Sunday night. I think everybody worked all night clearing debris from the roads, cutting trees, getting them off power lines, and then getting power lines back up and serviced back to our customers. I think we should all be very impressed and appreciative that the following morning after the storm, after having so much, so many outages within the city, Gallatin Department of Electricity reported that they only had three residents still without power just the morning after. And I know that in other parts of the area, there are still residents without power, but not in our city, thankfully. So that concludes Mayor's comments. I'm gonna move now to the regular agenda, and the first item is public hearing on 02004-15. Councilman Camp, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance in the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning approximately .73 acres, plus or minus parcel from agricultural residential to zoning district R15 medium density residential zoning district located east of Highway 109 and south of Odom Spence Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on official zoning adage, repealing conflict and ordinances, providing reserved building and provided for effective date. The public hearing.
Public hearing is now open, and we'll have to go through what we did at the beginning with the public comment, and Mr. Hinchell will give all those who are on the line the opportunity to speak. So public hearing is now open, and you may speak if you so desire.
Okay, starting at the top of the list, Mr. Marchesi?
I don't have, I didn't ask to speak.
Okay. And Mr. Jovance? Okay, phone number ending in 283?
Hear me? Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so actually, I was, I got put off before I was able to speak during the public recognition, so I don't know if I can speak now, or should I wait till the end? I was on an agenda-related item, but not on item number one.
Council, what's the, Will? Do you want to suspend the rules and allow this public comment on a different item to happen at this time? Or are you?
Be done with it.
Okay, motion by Councilman Overton?
Seconded.
Second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor? Or? We do it without a roll call, Miss Hall McColly? Okay, Ms. Kitchell, you'll have to call the roll for us, please, for a vote.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Ah.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fann?
Mr. Fann?
Yeah.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Now here he is?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. That means the speaker may proceed with the comment on a different item at this time.
Thank you, I really appreciate you doing that. So I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to make about.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but can you introduce yourself and?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Michelle Juvance. I'm at 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I just had a few comments about the contract. I read through the contract on the Woolhawk, and I know that the, what we're trying to do is save the city money with this contract. And so I had a couple of concerns that I think maybe could be an issue with that. So there's a one-year deadline to have the sewer completed, which seems to be really soon, May of 2021, to have the sewer completed. And if it's not completed by that date, then we have to pay cost overruns, including overtime or anything like that, that the customer would be requiring the city to do. So I don't understand why the developer isn't just doing the installation themselves, which is usually what happens with the development, because then any cost overruns are their own responsibility instead of the city's responsibility. So I am concerned about taxpayer dollars being spent on cost overruns with that. And then I was also concerned about the water capacity that we're dedicating to Woolhawk, because it seems as though, because they're asking for that, that it seems as though that would be a really large amount of capacity, and it doesn't say how much we're giving them, and it does actually say in the contract that we will give them even more if they require it and have a bigger development than what's actually planned at this time. And also the water price, it says that they won't be charged more than the going rate of other people in the area, but I was wondering if we're giving them a discount, because it doesn't say anything about that, and I don't think that we should. And I had a lot of other things too, but mostly just, I think the main issue is, is just the cost overruns that could happen, because just watching the sewer being put in over here for Kensington Downs, it's taken about a year, and it's a much smaller sewer. So I have concerns about that. And then it also doesn't look like we're getting a lot of money from them on the permits and the environmental studies. It seems like that's kind of a low price that's being tracked.
Does that conclude your comments, Ms. Juvance?
Oh, yes, I guess that's it for now, thank you. I can't wait till we're all back together, because this is kind of awkward.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we're gonna turn now to the public hearing and let Mr. Hinchell continue to go through people who are attending the meeting and see if anyone else would speak under the public hearing.
Phone number ending in 283, your mic is open. Do you have something to say about item number one?
No.
Okay, I started to meet you there, you said, you said no, correct. Phone number ending in 283, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Marchesi, did you have something you'd like to say?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And that is all the people in our attendees.
At that, we will declare our public hearing on ordinance 02004-15 closed. We will move now to first reading on ordinance 02004-15, and Councilman Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance in the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning approximately .73 plus or minus acres parcel from agricultural residential zoning district to R15 medium density residential district located east of Highway 109 and south of Odom Spence Road, authorizing revision to be indicated on official zoning adage, repealing conflict and ordinances, providing reserved building and provided for effective date. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Camp, a second by, I'm sorry, who was it?
Mr. Fennell.
Okay, a second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, where is Bill McCorde here?
Yes, I'm here.
Wouldn't this what we talked about a little bit last week, about this? Did y'all talk about this in planning?
The Planning Commission did review this request and voted six to zero not to recommend approval of the zoning, so they're not in favor of this zoning.
Okay.
And then there was some discussion last week about whether or not the zoning could be approved, but place a restriction on the plat- of at least 15,000 square feet, and that's why they're asking for the R15 zoning. And the state statute 68221-407 states that no proposed subdivision shall be approved by a local planning commission or other agency authorized to approve subdivisions until the plans for such subdivision have been approved by the commissioner. And the commissioner is the environmental director, which is defined in an earlier statute, which is the commissioner of environment and conservation, or their appointee. So oftentimes, that is maybe a TDEC member or a health department person. This person would be required to sign on the plat, and if they cannot provide proof that these lots can perk, they're not going to sign on the plat, which would prohibit them from subdividing the property. So that would defeat the purpose of rezoning the property. Now, I've also been told that the purpose that they wanted to divide it is so they could provide two different docks, and that's why they were offering the restriction not to build on it. The dock and that portion is on federal property, the Old Hickory Lake Reservation, so core property. And, you know, we're talking about the same family here, so I'm not sure why they couldn't just apply and get one dock on the property. Maybe Mr. Leith could answer that question.
Andy?
Mr. Andy? You know, I think the dock has been stated as a reason, but the underlying reason here is this is an inheritance, and they're trying to divide their parents' inheritance up. They probably will pursue getting two docks, but the bigger issue here is just divide the inheritance.
Thank you, Andy. Didn't we discuss this and talk about a restriction as to the owners in future having to put in sewer themselves? Since this is a family that's just really dividing this up, I'm not, I feel like this is something that's not, it's not necessary for us to be quite as strict.
Well, we understand fully and have explained to the client the issue with sewer, and I know Mr. Gregory has commented in a previous meeting that it'd take, you know, at least a million dollars to get sewer to this property. And you know, they're well aware of that, and if someone wants to run sewer to the property and has a million dollars laying around, then-
I'm sorry, sorry to say, we could pass this with that restriction that the owner in future, if anyone ever chose to put sewer there, they would be responsible for payment instead of the city. Is that correct?
I don't think, I know that our client is not expecting the city to incur the expense of sewer. They would fully be aware that they would have to get it there. Commissioners, if I can, I also want to remind you, and I think I mentioned this before, is that the county is likely to consider a resolution to amend their zoning ordinance to take over zoning in the areas outside the city limits, but now currently in our planning region. That resolution has not been approved yet. I think it's been put on hold because of the coronavirus situation, but as I understand, that is still a likely proposition that will be put forth, maybe sometime this summer. And that would remove the city from zoning authority in this area, and make the county essentially the entity responsible for administering zoning. So maybe it'd be best to, or maybe that's an option you want to consider, is just to table it until the county takes action on their resolution and let them deal with it.
That could be a year, that could be two years from now, we don't know that, though.
And he's been working on this now probably for, what, Andy, two or three years on this situation?
I don't know how long Mr. Weatherford's been working on it, but we've been working on it for over a year.
I agree with what Linda said. I thought that was a good comment. You know, I'm for allowing them to go ahead and get the same subdivision and sign a document stating that they know that they can't build there unless they're willing to flip the bill for the sewer, because I personally know these did not want to build a house over there.
It's also a really, really small lot.
What are you wasting, small, right?
Is there any way that we can do this, make sure that we're doing it legally and let them sign off on it, they won't attempt to build a house, or if they sell the lot that they cannot let anybody build a house after that?
And if I could interject real quick, and we don't want to try to even insinuate that we're trying to skate around the rules, that's one reason we're asking for this rezoning, so that we would be compliant. Explain that the request for R15, there's an adjacent lot, and I'm on the county JS website right now, that happens to belong with the other heirs, and it's roughly 18,000 square foot. And then the other lot that belongs to the heirs is a little over 20,000 square foot. So I, you know, we can disagree, and that's okay, I'm okay to disagree, but we felt like the R15 request was consistent with what's there on that side of the road in that general vicinity. The sewer's a separate issue, and even if we needed to put up some kind of bond money, I mean, but we're wanting to do this right and do it legal, and I know the bond would be ridiculous amount for a million dollars, but nobody's suggesting that we not do this legal and straightforward.
Make the motion, we approve the rezoning.
I second.
We already have a motion and a second, you all were just discussing.
Yeah, it's on board. Touch vote.
Anyone else wishing to discuss?
No, and it's still gonna have a second reading too, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02004-15. Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Okay. Just making sure. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fann?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mayor? Six yeses, one no.
Thank you. Item number, ordinance number 02004-15 is approved. Item number three is first reading on the ordinance 02005-17, and Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order to provide revenue for the city of Gallatin, Tennessee for municipal purpose for the 2020 tax year and 2023 fiscal year, and I so move.
Check it.
We have a motion by Councilman Alexander. Was that second by Councilman Overton?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's going up in the floor to discussion. Before we do go into discussion, I do want to mention that we always do three readings on the tax ordinance. The number that is in there is .8001, which is the number that we have this year. We will, what we've done generally is pass it twice, and then we hold on that third reading until we get the number from our property assessor. I also think this is a good time for me to acknowledge what one of the commentators at first of the meeting was saying about us talking about the tax rate. Well, it wasn't relevant to the coronavirus, it was relevant to the overvaluation of properties. I just want to make that clear, because what's happened is last year, our tax rate was based on our valuations. Well, a lot of our values were appealed, and those appeals were granted, and so the city of Gallatin has wound up having a much, a tax rate that did not meet our revenue from the previous year as it is supposed to. So basically, we lost a lot of money because of appeals. So it was that we had some, our property values were too high, they were appealed. We already had a tax rate set, and we had to take what came in as a result. And we do still have quite a number of appeals that are- And we do still have quite a number of appeals that are still out there. We could probably lose another three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue from those appeals that are still pending. So just wanted to clear that up. But now the floor is open for discussion on the tax rate, if anyone wishes to.
This is the same tax rate as we had last year.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Anyone else? All right, with that, this will be first reading on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-five dash seventeen. All in favor, please say a. Um, sorry, Ms. Kitchell, you must call the roll. I keep forgetting that.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fan?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Miss Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Order seven to zero.
Thank you. First reading on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-five dash seventeen passes unanimously. And we now move to first reading on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-five dash eighteen, and that is Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is orders for upgraded funds in an amount of five thousand dollars for Rosemont. It's no new money. It's just moving money and I so move.
I second that.
Have a motion from Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to discuss. So I'll ask Ms. Kitchell to please call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Mr. Stein.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
I'll disclose that I'm on that board, but I vote yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yeses and one extension.
Uh, Ms. McCauley, can I ask you a question? I wasn't thinking, but I don't have to mention anything the way my wife's on that board also, do I?
You're muted.
So then you're muted.
Ms. McCauley, there you go.
There you go. Um, you can always disclose that that is not a direct conflict under the law, so it would not affect your vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-five dash eighteen is approved on first reading. We'll move now to item number five, which is first reading on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-five dash nineteen. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Galton, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Motion to approve.
Second. And a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilwoman Love, opening the floor for discussion.
Mayor, I got one thing. It's Jimmy O. Did, did one of our callers that called in under public comments say that we should not put 401K into our city employees? Our matching part?
I don't, uh, there were, there was some discussion about maybe the benefits for the employees should be cut, but I, I'm not real clear on what the suggestions were.
I don't know.
We're also, we're also-
Go ahead, Mayor.
I was gonna say, we're bound by our agreement with TCRS two on, and our agreement with our employees on what we contribute. I don't know that we could even legally change that. Ms., Ms. Nichols, do you want to weigh in on that?
Not really.
Why don't you weigh in on that? I should rephrase.
I think you're correct. We do have a legal obligation and we're under contract for our nine percent that we put into their retirement.
Absolutely. And I just want to understand that nobody on this board would even think about doing something like that, taking away their 401K retirement. So I don't know what that caller was thinking, but-
That's exactly right. I like my uh, employees being comfortable.
Anyone else with comments on the budget this evening?
I think you've done a good job, Mayor.
I appreciate it.
That was bad times.
It is. And we're like, and we're hopefully going to be able to add a little bit more in later.
Well, I'm hopeful at this point that we don't have to take any more away.
I am too.
At least we ha- I mean, I feel like we have a, a, a good budget that um, that you, you know, is getting some things done. It is utilizing some of our reserve funds, which we typically do. The, the thing this year that concerns me is that we're not likely going to have reserves going into our next budget year. They, we're not gonna have additional reserve from this budget year because our revenues have been hit so hard this last part of our budget year. So we won't have that bucket of reserve come next budget year, but I still think that we'll be able to manage. So the city is in a good place and I think there are good opportunities ahead and I'm excited. Any questions about the um, ordinance that Rachel drew up? It's always interesting to me to look at the, you know, line by line item budget one week and then look at the ordinance the next week where you actually kind of see it in simplified terms with everything drawn out about- Anyone? Okay, if there are no further questions, we will proceed to a vote for first reading on the ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-five dash nineteen, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Fan?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Miss Love?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Seven yeses, that yeses and zero no's.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, you all. We will move now to the final item on the agenda for the evening, which is resolution R-two-zero-zero-five dash twenty-three. Councilman Fennell is recognized for that, but I'm certain you will want Mr. Fenton to weigh in as well.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing a mayor to sign water and sewer service contract with rule-
My computer is frozen up.
My, my service froze for just a minute.
Yeah, mine as well.
We can hear you.
Did everyone hear Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Yes.
But Mayor, I did not get the second. I did not hear anyone say-
I, I didn't hear either one.
I did.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion and then-
Okay, I'm sorry, of course. And then Miss Love seconded it, okay.
All right.
And with that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Fenton to address this for everyone.
So as we spoke, thank you, Mayor and Councilor, as we spoke last week, Mr. Gregory and has uh, done a tremendous job putting this together to ensure that the city remains whole. Um, this agreement uh, starts with the prospect tomorrow, I believe, uh, depositing eight-point-four million dollars into the city's account to start the uh, design and engineering and installation of the water for this project. Uh, a caller uh, this afternoon, or this evening rather, um, was concerned about um, the fact that maybe there was a discount. And there is no discount. They are paying the rates that every other one of our customers pays. So that's not something we need to, to have on the conversation. And she also mentioned that there was a concern that in the contract, there was a, uh, that the city was going to be charged anything that was necessary to make this happen on time. And I want to reassure the entire council and the public that that responsibility will be passed on in the bid that goes out to the, the companies that will construct this. Whoever takes on the bid to construct this and install all of this will be responsible for any of those costs.
That's good to know.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Gregory, you and I just want to clarify one thing. And last night on social media, I guess after it was on the planning commission, one of our residents decides that uh, he's gonna say that he thinks that we're gonna give them all the water that we have and we're not gonna have any more water for our residents. Can you just clarify uh, that we do have plenty of, of water for our residents, please?
Yeah, we're a little over half capacity. It's a sixteen million gallon plant. So we can furnish sixteen million gallons and right now we're averaging about seven million gallons. So a- a- and they're not gonna use it, but about, if they use it a million gallons a day, like they're saying, uh, that won't be, but go three times a year. I like they're doing it every day. It's just for cooling water when it-
I appreciate that, Mr. Gregory. I just wanted to be sure all those rumors got put to bed out there, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, another thing I wanted to clear up about the sewer being in, in uh, May? That's not correct. It's the water line that's supposed to be in May. The first part of the sewer goes in by November of twenty-twenty-one, and then there's thirty months after for the second phase of it. So it's not, all the sewer doesn't have to go in the year.
There again, it's just misinformation. I appreciate you clarifying it.
Sure.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Gregory, is there anything else that you want to offer? I mean, I know that you and the attorney and Mr. Fenton have worked on this agreement for a long time and I appreciate you all so work on this and, and, and kind of going back and forth to get it all worked out because it is a big agreement.
Right. I just like to say it's, it's a, it's a win-win situation for us, the city, the uh, community, for the water department, for, you know, it's a win-win situation. When you got somebody willing to give you eight-point-four million dollars to provide their own, you know, really, it helps our system too.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Greg.
Anyone else have any comments or questions related to this? All right, with that, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kitchell to call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Mr. Alexander?
H-two-O. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
H-two-O.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Miss Love?
Yes.
And Mr. Overton?
Yeah.
Mayor, you have seven a's and zero n's.
Thank you very much. That concludes the regular agenda and moves us down to other business. I do have just a couple of items that I would like input on. One is um, our plan to open buildings. I've said this, I, I still don't want it to be a firm thing because things could change. But right now I think it's appropriate for the city of Galton to open our buildings on May eighteenth. The governor's order um, on virtual meetings is set to expire at twelve oh-one AM on the eighteenth. And therefore we would plan to open buildings on the eighteenth because we would actually have a planning commission meeting on that day and then a city council meeting the following day. I think that could be changed between now and then, but right now I'm saying that um, we're tentatively opening buildings on the eighteenth, um, mostly to say that we're not planning to open them before then. The other side of that is that we do wish to go ahead and open our golf course. We feel like we can operate that safely and want to be able to do that. And so with this council's endorsement, we will change the executive or the, who knows? What, what we call them, Susan, executive orders? Does that all, doesn't sound right? But any-
It's an executive order.
Okay, the executive orders so that um, the golf course is omitted from the all-city buildings will be closed. It would be the exception to that. Um, so if the council is okay with that, Mr. Brown is, by the way, and I think he's on here. If you have any questions for him, but um, just wanted to ask you all about that and see how you felt on those two pieces of that one thing.
Thank you, Mayor. I got some phone calls about the golf course and we do need to get it open, so I agree with you.
What are we gonna do about carts, David? Are we gonna do one to a cart?
I, I, I asked him not too long ago, Craig, and he did say it'd be one to a cart. That's what the signs are.
And I s- I see that in my neighborhood, and Craig, you do too, where we live. And Susan, they're using one of their cart. Can I ask you something, Mayor?
Certainly.
I've had a couple of people ask me about uh, uh, the festival on the square, about that many people. I think that it was reset maybe to July. Is that probably still gonna happen or we do it day by day?
I truly say we don't know yet. Realize that we also have the Fourth of July still. Well, we have Third Thursday scheduled to start in June. We have the Fourth of July scheduled in July. And then Square Fest has been um, moved to July. But I think in the next several weeks, we will make the decision as to whether or not we move forward with all those. As I was looking at um, you know, thinking about the Fourth of July, it, you know, worst case scenario to me would be we still do the fireworks and let the city, because we have a contract for the fireworks, let the city enjoy the fireworks, but maybe don't have the festival if we were to cancel that. But um, I, I, I think a lot of people would like to feel like we can have those events and have them safely, but I think the next several weeks will be telling as we see if the cases, you know, continue to decline and we start getting some zero increases would be what we would be looking for over a period of weeks.
Paige, what would be your restrictions on opening the city hall? Six people at a time, ten?
No, I mean, i- in, in the council meetings, we'll have to figure a way to still, you know, provide the social distancing. Um, it technically doesn't fall under a social gathering, but um, we would want to do social distancing and we would want to have some kind of price signs at the doors screening people, saying do not enter if you have had a fever, if you have any symptoms, or if you've been around anyone with coronavirus. We would still encourage people to still use electronic means to communicate, but we would have the building, you know, accessible for people who absolutely needed to come in here. And it wouldn't just be city hall, it would be all of our city buildings.
Also, in regards to open, reopen up the, uh, the golf course, will they be required to wear a mask or not?
I don't think so. I mean, uh, uh, the governor's not mandating mask and I don't, and I feel like it would be overreach of us to mandate masks. And um, I think that would be up to individuals.
What about the civic center? Any plans to open that?
We had, I mean, that falls under a city building, but um, Mr. Brown and I have not discussed that at this point. Because realize that even if we wore, I think to-
Eighteen.
Go ahead.
The, the civic center is scheduled to open the eighteenth.
Okay. But we may still not be able to allow open pool and open the, well, actually the pool, I think is in maintenance right now, but um, but there may still be portions of the civic center that we can't open in accordance with the governor's orders. But I think we'll continue to get more guidance over the next week or so. It would probably um, continue to change some of our plans. We may get some extension on, on electronic meetings. I don't know. Um, but we will, we will see. We will, we will continue- I heard you.
You go.
You hearing me?
No.
We can now.
Yeah, we can now, Paige.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the last thing I think I said was um, you know, that we want to embark on, um, continue down this path we've embarked on and um, make the most of it. Everybody's frozen again.
You're good, Paige.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to comment if I can. Greg, it's about our sidewalk down Brown's Lane. I just want to say it looks like it's about wrapped up. Um, I know there's a lot of people that had their um, laid a hand in this and I appreciated it at first. It was a mess. We got a lot of people that complained about it, but you know what? I started, I had like three phone calls in the past two days. Uh, I've seen people walking on it and actually it really was a lot. And um, I'm glad this, this was a bond, I mean, a grant, right? And uh, thank for this, so good job to all.
Mayor, I got one thing when you get, when you get to me.
Go for it.
I, I don't know who I got to email today, but Newman Downs, did anybody else get the email today on Newman Downs and the property owner behind him, the Hollis property?
I sent it, I sent it to Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Wagner, and I think they've been in meetings all afternoon, probably haven't even seen it yet, so.
Okay, if, if, if y'all would just respond, I appreciate it there. I, I, I mean, we talked about that a lot when that development was approved and I just want to be sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing on it.
I'll see it now, Jimmy. I've got the mail now.
Y'all just respond to us tomorrow. I just want to be sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing on that property.
Nick's here. You got something to say?
I just wanted to say that we've already been in discussion with Mr. Hollins uh, multiple times. So we'll continue to, we'll follow up with him again uh, and see if there is anything that we can do to help.
Okay, I appreciate it, Nick. Thank you a lot.
Anyone else with other business? I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I'm gonna move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This, of course, is the time of the meeting where people who have a comment on something that wasn't on this evening's agenda um, may make their opinion known or their suggestion known. So at this time, we will open up public comment on non-agenda-related items as we get to the beginning of the meeting and under the public hearing, Mr. Henshaw will check with all of the people who are present either in the meeting or via phone to see if they would like to speak at this time.
Frank Marchese has raised his hand. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor. Counsel Frank Marchese here, five-eight-nine Harris Lane. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor. Counsel Frank Marchese here, five eighty-nine, Air Slade. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, you're good.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, it's been a while since I've made any comment about, uh, the development next to West Liberty Creek. I've tried to be a good neighbor to them. I have taken to just, um, instead of calling police at, at close two times and various times, I've been putting my feelings out on Facebook, which you've seen, because I've tagged the City of Gallatin in that, not accusing you, just to make you aware of what I'm seeing. Uh, this morning, I left for the diner at ten to six in the morning, and there were already construction trucks in the neighborhood getting ready to work. Now, I myself was going to work using proper protective equipment, by the way, which the contractors do not do. Um, and being so close to my property line, you tend to worry about people sneezing, coughing, being so close to your property. Um, but at ten to six in the morning, they're already out there and talking, and they can't start till seven o'clock. I would really love, I would really request to know what is being done to get on Liberty Creek, the developer and Davidson Homes. There has been a camera put there by the city. Everybody I asked doesn't know who put the camera there, what's it for? Are, are we monitoring their activities? Um, you know, they're working, last night, they worked till it was twenty after seven, and they were working on the property right next to my master bedroom. And I went outside and I said, hey, guys, it's twenty after seven. The guy shrugged his shoulders, turned around, and continued to work. Now, I didn't call the police because the thunder or lightning had just started at that time. I figured they would go home. I didn't bother going back outside, but I didn't hear anything. Um, I, I would just like to know, you know, are we learning any lessons from Liberty Creek that we're gonna pass on to future developments? And is codes actually not the police? But is our codes enforcement department doing something, and what are they doing about it? I don't mean to just sound like a complainer, but I, I, it is so annoying, especially when you're sequestered in your home for so long. And if you're, it, it's your only place of solitude, and you have to listen to this pounding and, and pneumatic nail guns and hammers and saws after prescribed hours.
And then I kind of would like to know this too, because I've been on the city council probably longer than anybody has, about twenty-four years. This is the first time I can remember that somebody has complained this much about a subdivision like this that's going on. As many subdivisions have gone up in this city? And, and I mean, is it, is it? I mean, I, I, I want to know too, because, like I said, I've been on here twenty-four years. I've never had anybody complain maybe once, twice about something like this. And, and, and I'm not blaming you, Frank, because I know what's going on, because you see it going on. But I mean, is this guy the only one that's ever done this, or is it just, wh- what, what, what is the problem?
A- and Mr. is, you know, I, it's not just me who's complaining. My neighbors are complaining too. A lot of them, we, we complain to each other, and then I come to you guys, or Pascal comes to you guys. Um, it, it's, it's not only that, it's just, they, they are not the nicest contractors. Like, there is garbage all over the place, and I know we just had tarantula-heavy downpours. But Irish Lane and Griffin Lane is a muddy mess at this time. You're, I, I, I'm glad Mr. Car Wash reopened, so I can get my car washed. I'd love to send them the bill for my monthly car wash bill. Because I'm constantly driving through mud.
I know, and I, I remember when I lived in this subdivision, when they were building houses, it was the same way. When you live in, when you live in this subdivision, they're building houses, it's gonna be like that, but-
But I don't live in the subdivision. I live next to it. They should be taking precautions to, to, uh, you know, we let people, you guys, they let people move into the houses while the subdivision's still under construction. There's no proper street, there's no proper curbing, there's no proper sidewalks. I hear kids running in back of all the houses now, and the people that just moved in, I know that's their business. Uh, they must have a, um, vehicle when, uh, when they have the rules together for a subdivision, the, uh-
Well, you gotta have a cer- certificate of occupancy to move in, so they gotta have that.
I understand that, but I believe they also owe us a copy of their, um-
It's about the homeowner association.
Yes, the homeowners association. Don't they owe the neighbors a copy of the rules and the bylaws of the homeowners association?
Probably not if you're a neighbor, you're not in that subdivision. Something you might want to consider, Frank. We start injuring their process and construction, you're just gonna be in misery that much longer. Let them get in there, get finished, and get out.
Well, that's great, Steve, but it would be nice to get in a good night's sleep. I mean, I, you know, I get up four thirty, so, you know, I, I like to go to bed eight thirty. God forbid I should go to bed early, because they're working past seven o'clock at night.
And I have all sympathy for Frank, because he has complained about this for months and months, and this company just seems to just shrug their shoulders and not care what happens.
Thank you, Lyda. And I'm just asking, Mayor, what are we doing about it? I would like an answer in this forum as to what is being done. Not just please, and Mayor, I'm not pointing a finger at you at all by saying, you know, I should go to the police, or I should go to codes. I want everybody to know what is being done, because-
I, I, I think you know, and we've told you, that, you know, every time that there's a complaint, the police go out there, and the codes has been following up with them every time that they are aware of a complaint. The problem is, is that the penalties that we can, um, give them are not significant enough to make them stop. And I don't know, um, um, Chuck Stewart, are you on here? You are? Where'd you go? I'm not seeing you, but Chuck, if you're here, you may wish to comment, and, um, Chief Andy, you may as well.
Chuck, Chuck is having some problems. He's trying to get back on. He asked me to let you know.
Okay, Chief Andy's there.
John, Bande, Police Department, uh, the last time that we had, uh, had this discussion, I, I-
Cut off, John.
On your froze, I think, buddy.
He'll be back.
Hello?
There you go.
Are you there now?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we, we have, uh, we have, I think, twelve complaints, uh, the last week of, uh, April there, and I haven't got an update on how many complaints and how many citations we've issued recently. Uh, we've tried to keep an eye on it, um, and, um, again, we can just keep going out writing tickets if that's what we need to do.
We appreciate that, Chief. We know you're, you guys are keeping an eye on it. Uh, Mayor, I, my, my concern is, you know, I just want to know what's, is anything being done from the codes department? I, I know Chief Andy and the police department, they're writing tickets. I get that, but is somebody talking to the developers? Somebody talking to Davidson Homes? That's-
Yeah, I mean, the la- last time we had this conversation, remember Chuck Stewart said that he was going out there and that he would go out there again, and I followed up with him the last time that you made a comment, and he had been out there and talked to them again. I, I do not know why there continues to be issue. He also had them re-erect the signs that were down. And, um, because they had been up and then they worn up, so he had that taken care of. But, um, I don't know where Chuck is, so I can't have an answer to that for you right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
It sounds like the penalties, no.
She's back.
I think, um, I was trying to comment that, I think Mr. Fan, Fan said the penalty was enough, but our, we are limited by what we can do as this penalty, um, municipality. I think our limit is, Ms. Kettle, Ms. Han McCauley, it's fifty dollars, right?
That's correct. We're limited by state statute. That's the highest that we can go.
That's the only way I was making is that, as long as the penalty is that low, as the state's setting the penalty, there's not much we can do. As long as I think it's better to play the penalty continue.
That is probably the truth. And Mr. Stewart has not, and not returned, so if you guys wish, we can move forward with, um, public comment?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, our next, uh, attendee's number ends in two, eight, three. Your mic is open.
G F X, Mr. Brown, I think. He's not gonna say that.
I got you. And Javances, to, your mic is open? Okay, that's everyone.
Mayor, I have one more comment. Uh, Mr. Brown sent me a message and said, let everybody know the golf course will be open at seven AM Thursday morning.
Good. Hopefully, it'll be pretty weather, and we'll have some happy golfers.
That's right.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Marchese will try and follow up after we hear from Mr. Stewart. And, um, I'll be to on that, and then there's nothing further.
Mayor, I was just gonna ask Mr. Brown, uh, when we open up the golf course, uh-
Seven AM Thursday morning.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, but my question is, will we be doing any kind of a disinfecting wipe on the golf carts, uh, or not? And if someone bring their own golf cart, uh, is there any restriction where they would have to wipe the golf cart off?
David Brown, Parks Director, there, there'll be one to a cart, when the cart is returned, someone will disinfect the whole cart. It'll be washed down and disinfected, and then all the restrooms and everything will be disinfected every two hours or as necessary. If you bring your own cart, that's your responsibility.
Well, they don't necessarily have to wipe it off if they bring it on, then, right?
Well, we may be charging for additional disinfectants for those carts, or is it just expensive to see?
That'd just be an expense to the city.
All right, anyone else with anything this evening? Okay, without, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Oh, it's adjourned, but Jimmy Overton.
Thank you. Backed up by Councilwoman Love. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. We thank you for joining us for the meeting this evening, and-
All right, y'all take care.
We'll see you again next week. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye. See you in the morning papers.